Afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners and everyone. We're going to start our public hearings at this time. We're going to have our first public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative budget. September 17, 2024, 6:00 p.m., Leon County Courthouse Commission. Chambers, public hearing agenda. This is the first of two required public hearings on the Leon County budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. The second and final public hearing will be Tuesday, September 24, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. If you wish to speak in person, please complete a speaker's card and turn it in to the clerk. Citizens' registers to speak in person or to provide virtual comments will be asked to speak prior to the commission taking a vote on the millage rate and budget. Now, Mr. County Administrator, Vincent Long, will read the millage rate into the public record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, if it seems like we're very scripted, it's because we are. We're required to read certain things into the records in accordance with the Truth and Millage Act. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll read the millage rate into the public record. I'd like to invite our Budget Director, Rashonda Bradley, to the podium to follow with a brief presentation on the FY '25 tentative budget. The proposed aggregate millage rate is 9.0644 mils, which is a 3.00% over the aggregate rolled-back millage rate of 8.8033 mils. Ad valorem revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values. This increase will be used to support sustaining quality level of essential services countywide. Commissioners, you have provided all the necessary guidance throughout the development of the tentative budget, and all of the direction provided in the various agendas and workshops during the budget process have been incorporated into the 2025 tentative budget. With that, Commissioners, I'd like to hand it over to Rashonda Bradley, our Director of Management and Budget, for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you, Vince. Commissioners, as the County Administrator just stated, the fiscal year 2025 budget presented to you today reflects all of your policy direction and leadership throughout this entire budget development process, as has been reflected in your numerous agenda items and workshop Commissioners, the FY '25 budget is balanced at $378 million. This budget reflects the Board's consistent, physically conservative approach to budgeting, which allows us to continue to provide the quality, high-quality services while keeping our tax burden low, among the lowest for our citizens. As we reiterated, Commissioners, throughout this budget process, this is accomplished as we continue to face high inflation throughout our budget, continued unfunded mandates, and also other cost shifts to local governments. All of this is in addition to the normal operating impacts or increases that we have each year to just basically open the doors, which usually averages around $10 to $12 million a year. Again, Commissioners, all of this is accomplished without the need to increase any taxes or fees this year. We have been and continue to be a physically stable organization, and that provides consistency to our taxpayers as well. Commissioners, some of the highlights of the budget that you're familiar with include, of course, for the 13th year in a row, no change to any of our, to our countywide millage rate. Again, this year, no new tax or fee increases of any kind. Continued fiscal constraint with no new county general revenue positions, just the one position, of course, for LCSO to patrol the western side of the community, in addition to increasing starting pay for deputies. Also this year, Commissioners, we talked about during your budget workshop, this is the last year of ARPA funding, so we are continuing to maximize that federal funding in this year's budget. And lastly, Commissioner, as we continue to address ongoing threats to the county budgets, as the Administrator stated earlier, our employees are continuing to seek opportunities to cut costs. These efforts, of course, are not isolated to the budget process. It's a deliberate approach that occurs throughout the year through our square program, and all of these recommendations, Commissioners, are brought to you prior to seeking any new taxes or fees. For this year alone, as we've already pointed out, over $12 million in savings have been identified, and because we are counting, that's $76 million since 2013. Also, Commissioners, as was reflected today in the video and in your annual report documents, while the budget is conservative, the budget continues to implement some of the Board's most ambitious goals, which are seen throughout this budget. Now, Commissioners, just switching, transitioning to the overall budget, I know everyone wants to know where the money's coming from and where the funds are going. On the screen, there's a summary of anticipated revenues and expenditures from our FY '24 budget. I won't go through each detailed line item, as I know you're familiar with this chart, but I did want to highlight our property tax, our general revenue dollars. As you know, this year, we are expecting about a 10% increase in our property values, which is going to equate to about $18 million in additional property tax revenue this year. If you look over to the expense side of the chart, you'll see that 10.7 or nearly 11 million of that 18 million is going to the sheriff alone. You were also this year, Commissioners, able to invest an additional $4.2 million roughly into your capital program to address critical infrastructure needs, including those improvements and heavy equipment replacements that we talked about to help us be in a better position to respond to those severe weather events like we experienced this year. Other increases, Commissioners, that we talked about during the budget workshops, address those inflationary increases for our county core services. Commissioners, we know that it's important to consider how the millage rate affects our current property owners. As we talked about, Commissioners, we are expecting $18 million in additional property tax revenue this year. Of that, 6 million of that is attributed to new residential and commercial property, and $3 million of that alone is for the Amazon facility. Now, I did want to reiterate, because we know that there were some questions during the summer about the value increase, the 10% increase does not equate to a corresponding 10% increase in property tax bills. No matter how much a value of a property increases, of course, state statute limits that increase for our homestead properties to 3% or the change in CPI, whichever is lower. And when we talk about your homestead properties, Commissioners, those are usually your primary residences. And just some data from the property officer's office, when we consider all the single-family residences on the property tax roll, about 80% of single-family properties in the county are homestead. And for those non-homestead properties, the cap is 10%. So those are your investment properties, your rental properties, your second homes. And I did pull some data, so when we talk about the cap being either 3% or lower, depending on CPI, for the past seven years, excuse me, for the past 10 years, the CPI has been lower than that 3%. So out of seven of the past 10 years, properties' values, taxable values, have not even met that 3% threshold. On the chart, Commissioners, we did just want to show you an example of what the property tax bill or impact this year would be for those average homeowners. So for a single-family resident with homestead exemption, the annual impact is about $53, which is a little over $4 a month. And you'll see also there the impact for non-homestead properties. I know there was also concerns about renters, so we did pull an average 85-unit apartment complex, and you'll see if that charge was passed on to renters, it would only be about $5.50 a month. Again, Commissioners, these are just some of the impacts. We wanted to just give you an idea of what that looks like for the average property owner. And Commissioners, as I wrap up my comments, I wanted to also just share how we compare to our like-sized counties and other like-sized counties in Florida. When you consider the inflationary cost increases and other budget pressures that we experience in our budget, and factor in county governments all across the state, again, this year, the Board continues to fund an extremely effective and efficient organization compared to our like-sized counties. When it comes to our budget, as the County Administrator stated in his remarks, we have the lowest net budget and a very close second lowest budget per county resident. And on top of that, Commissioners, as you know, we continue to do this as we have some of the most property taxes off the tax rolls in the state. All of this, Commissioners, further underscores how efficient we are in providing all the essential services in our community, and we're doing this, continuing to do this with very limited resources. But that, Commissioners, as noted in your public hearing materials, these are the recommended options, which must be voted on separately and in order presented. As the Chair stated, our final public hearing is scheduled for September 24 at 6:00 p.m. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we have no further speakers on this item, and with that, I'll hand it back to you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Florida statute requires the Board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The Board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. So now I will entertain a motion from my colleagues. We'll look at the options separately. So Option 1.
Chair, move Option 1.
Thank you. Thank you, second by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Commissioner Proctor, are you there?
Aye.
Thank you. So is she unanimous? Option, I'm sorry. Oh, you voted no. I'm sorry. I apologize. So one, no. Madam Clerk, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, Option 2.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Option 2, I would like to make a motion to adopt via resolution the tentative FY '24-25 countywide budget without the line item funding for Big Ben Homeless Coalition, also known as Family Promise of the Big Ben. I'd like to declare my conflict as CEO of Family Promise of the Big Ben.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. All, any discussion? Now, this is number 2, excluding the Big Ben Homeless Coalition. All those that, I'm sorry.
I do have discussion, real quick.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mainly, it's just a question for the County Administrator. For our volunteer firefighter departments, I have been told that, you know, they're having a hard time keeping and recruiting folks, and could you just tell us a little bit about how our volunteer firefighter budget helps keep them and recruit new folks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Commissioner, and I know our chief is probably in the audience here, and he can back me up a little bit on this, but generally speaking, we do provide an annual budget for our volunteer fire departments, which is somewhat unique. Often, fire departments, volunteer fire departments are funded exclusively through donations and that sort of thing, but again, we do, the Board has taken that position for many years, that we provide an annual budget through, and we do so through the fire services fee. We pay for it through the fire services fee, and Chief Abrams could probably provide a lot more detail than I could on the individual VFD's budgets, if you'd like to have that.
Yeah, Commissioners, the County Administrator is correct. We split that money. It's about $115,000 in next year's budget that's split between the VFD's under a board policy that we brought an item not too long ago about to you guys and adjusted the amount that we're providing them for the primary apparatus at each of those stations that helps us with the ISO credits of increasing that amount. Specifically to recruitment, Volunteer Leon has recruitment opportunities and training for them, as well as we host the Volunteer Fire Truck Roundup, which is focused around Fire Prevention Week as a way to help them with recruitment and, you know, get some recognition within the community that they provide service throughout the county.
Thank you, Chief. Anything further, Commissioner O'Keefe? Thank you so much. So we've got a motion and a second excluding Big Ben Homeless Coalition. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
We need a motion. I'll make a motion to, I think, item, the Big Ben Homeless Coalition.
Yeah, we just did. Okay. We do.
No, we just excluded it.
We excluded it, right?
Yes, so.
Okay. We excluded it. So, okay, that's the same thing. And we've voted now on that particular budget item, excluding Big Ben Homeless, right? And so now I need to entertain a motion that includes Big Ben Homeless Coalition, and with Commissioner Maddox recusing himself because of the conflict.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Proctor, are you there? He might not be. No discussion. All those in favor of the budget item funding for Big Ben Homeless Coalition, Family Promise of the Big Ben, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. With Commissioner Nick Maddox recusing himself. Commissioner Proctor, again, are you there? And we'll say Commissioner Proctor out of chambers, Madam Clerk. Okay. All right, we're now at Option 3. I'd like to recognize a Commissioner to move. Well, Option 3, 4, and 5, no conflict has been raised. So Option 3, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the adoption of Option 3, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor, are you there? Okay, it's unanimous, 2 for. With Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Option 4, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye to Option 4.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor, we shall show Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Option 5, I will entertain a motion. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor? Hearing none, ayes have it, with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. And I believe, Mr. County Administrator, that takes care of our first public hearing.
It does, Madam Chair, and if I could, before you close it, County Attorney brought to my attention that I may have misread the aggregate rollback, and just in case I did, let me just state for the record, the aggregate rollback rate of 8.8003 mils. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator, now we are on public hearing, number 30.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Item Number 30 requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting a resolution to approve and adopt the non-ad valorem assessment role for the Local Provider Participation Fund Non-Ad Valorem Assessment. This item is requested by the local hospitals each year to draw down an estimated $49 million in gross federal and local provider participation funding to be paid to the local hospitals next fiscal year and would not require any county funding. Of the 49 million, it's estimated the county will collect 26 million from the local hospitals as a non-federal share to ensure deadlines established by ACA are met. The public hearing regarding the assessment is typically held in September of each year. Commissioners, the recommendations are provided before you. Options 1, 2, and 3 are recommended. Again, this is simply a function that we provide to allow the hospitals to draw down additional dollars. And I believe, Commissioners, let me just verify, I think we've got three speakers. Two are here, just in case there are questions, but with that, let me just verify here, too many speaker cards. No, I believe we have two, just in case there are questions. So Laura McDonald is here, as well as Priscilla Needham is here as well from TMH. So again, if there are questions, we have folks here in the audience, but with that, we are recommending Options 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Move Options 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion from Commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor of staff recommendation Options 1, 2, and 3, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor, are you there? Yes, I, Madam Clerk, with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator, I believe we are on Item 31.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item Number 31, Commissioners, request the Board conduct the first and only public hearing to adopt an ordinance to add a new membership category for appointment to the Leon County Affordable Housing Committee and amend the AHAC's Enabling Resolution to reflect this new membership. As you may recall, the Board directed in June that the new membership category be created on the AHAC specifically for an individual who currently receives rental assistance and has benefited from an affordable housing program or experienced eviction in the last 10 months. Adopting the ordinance and amending the Enabling Resolution would effectuate the Board's direction. We're requesting one, Options Number 1 and 2. Happy to answer any questions. We do have one speaker on this item, Stanley Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Sam.
Evening. 1320 Avondale Way. I just want to say briefly, we went to an opening today of a housing unit, and they had a resident speaking. It is so important to engage the people who we try to help. That way, it's received better, they feel a part of their community, they feel engaged, and they're respected. And so I just want to thank Commissioner O'Keefe, thank this Board, thank you even Vince, for creating an environment and an atmosphere where every taxpayer can be not only heard, but participate in bettering their community. Thank you again for this appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Sam.
That concludes our speakers on this side.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion for Options 1 and 2.
Move Options 1 and 2.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank everyone for supporting this, and there's two groups of folks, one person and two groups, I'd like to thank. First is Mr. Stanley Sims for bringing this to our attention, that we ought to include somebody on the advisory committee who has been assisted or by rent programs or gone through eviction. And I want to thank staff for running with this. They have already planned coordination with the Tallahassee Housing Authority and other housing partners to recruit applicants, and so I'm just really excited for this to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, and I just want to echo your sentiments. We want to thank Mr. Sims. He raised this, we embraced it, and it has come to fruition, and I think it's just a great demonstration to show that we, as elected officials, we listen to our constituents, we listen to people that come before the Board. So thank you, Mr. Sims. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor? Hearing no opposition, it passes with Commissioner Proctor out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finally, for your public hearings tonight, Commissioners, this item, Item Number 32, requests the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing on the Small Cities Community Block Grant Opportunity through the Florida Department of Commerce. As presented in the item, Commissioners, the Florida Administrative Code requires that local governments must hold two public hearings to apply for the CDBG funding. The first public hearing is limited to general information on the grant opportunity, which staff will present shortly, and citizens' comments on projects or activities that could be funded through this opportunity. Florida Code does not allow for any board discussion or action during the first public hearing, and however, at the second public hearing, which is recommended for your next meeting in October, the Board will have the opportunity to consider recommended projects based on the CDBG requirements and project competitiveness. For tonight, in accordance with the state requirements, Shinkton Lamby will provide a brief presentation with the general information of the CDBG grant opportunity, and then we'll turn it over to the Chair to take public comments, and we do have three in the queue at this time, and with that, Mr. Lamby.
Good evening again, Commissioners. I will be lightning quick with this one. As the County Administrator mentioned, so for this, for the first public hearing, I just wanted to kind of give some brief overviews of CDBG, of course, which is the Community Development Block Grant. It is federal funds that are used to improve the quality of life and economic opportunities for low to moderate-income households in distressed neighborhoods in the community throughout the nation. Those dollars are doled out through, see, are distributed to entitlement communities and non-entitlement communities. So what entitlement community is defined is those are communities that get direct and annual funding from the federal government. In order to do, to receive those dollars, for a city, you have to have a population of at least 50,000, and for a county, you have to have a population of at least 200,000, but 200,000 in your unincorporated areas, so we can't include the city of Tallahassee for our community. Of course, city of Tallahassee's population is well over 50,000, so they are entitlement community, and for Leon County, we are considered a non-entitlement community because unincorporated Leon County has less than 200,000 population. So because of that, we apply through, in Florida, through the nine entitlement communities through the Department of Commerce, Florida State Department of Commerce is how we apply. It's a competitive grant process that non-entitlement communities have to go through. In August, Florida Commerce announced the availability of $25 million through the federal fiscal year 2020 Small City CDBG funding opportunity. The application window opened on September 2. It closes on October 17 of this year. There will be four areas we may be able to apply for. It provides funding for the found activities, and they have to occur, of course, in unincorporated Leon County, since the city receives CDBG funding. And I'll just touch real quick on those four areas, which is housing rehab, neighborhood revitalization, commercial revitalization, commercial revitalization, economic development as part of the requirements for this first public hearing. So the first one is housing rehabilitation. This provides major repairs or replacements of homes of low to moderate-income households. These repairs can include roof replacements, separate tank replacements, flooring, HVAC, ramps. These are very similar, Commissioners, to what we do with our SHIP program, again, for unincorporated parts of Leon County. This would be for the benefit, as required, for homeowners or multi-family projects that are focused to low to moderate-income households, and you can receive up to $750,000 if you were to apply for this activity. The other one is neighborhood revitalization. These are utilized for neighborhood improvements, like streets, sidewalks, parks, water and sewer infrastructure, as well as renovations to community centers or construction of community centers. For these projects, they have to be in a service area that serves at least 51% of individuals who are low to moderate income, that those individuals must be representing that service area. Again, you can receive up to $750,000 for that activity opportunity. Commercial revitalization is, it assists private property owners with some of the things you see up here listed, with renovating structures that are blighted in low-to-moderate area communities with exterior improvements, with water and sewer improvements, code compliance improvements, and parks and open spaces for improvements, and parks and open spaces for parks and playgrounds that may also be in a private area. But again, these projects, and when you apply for those, have to be in a service area with, where the population is at least 51% or more that are low to moderate income. And for that, you can also, we could also potentially apply for up to $750,000. Finally, with economic development, it's very similar to commercial revitalization. However, the primary difference is that it must be, it must not, it must also create private jobs, must be, must be creating private jobs. And according to Florida Commerce, when we've participated as part of their workshops and questions, is that local governments that typically apply for economic development, C D B G funding, do so in partnership with a job creator, which is typically a private business who will be retaining or creating at least one permanent job for every, about $35,000 of C D B G funding that is awarded. And the funding limits for that is you can receive up to $1.5 million. Now, between these four, I just want to share that you can apply for one of these, you can't apply for all of them, except for economic development potentially, if you have a private sector partner that you're applying along with. As the County Administrator mentioned, so tonight is just the public hearing where you get public comments, and of course, I make this presentation. But for the second public hearing, that would be the opportunity where Commissioners, we will consider any recommended projects that will come before you at that time. Those recommendations of even a potential application will be based on citizen comments that you hear tonight, project feasibility competitiveness of those projects, as well as your C D B G Citizen Advisory Task Force, as mentioned in your agenda item, Commissioners. The task force actually is an important piece of scoring for our application that actually would make us competitive. The task force is established by the Board, and they regularly provide us input on our C D G program and processes, as well as recommendations. And so they'll be meeting later this week to discuss that, also make recommendations. All of these will come before the Board as part of your second public hearing, which as is recommended, your item will be for the October 8th meeting at 6:00 P. M. With that, I'll answer any questions, as they have, or just sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shinkton. We've got three speakers, Commissioners. The first speaker is Kayla Norris Barber.
Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Bivard Street. I am the Executive Director of the Mount Olive Affordable Housing and Community Development Corporation. I am also a member of the Housing Leadership Council. As I traverse the county, I noticed, and I'm sure you've noticed too, that housing conditions in some of our communities are deplorable. So I'm here tonight to support the application of the C D B G grant, particularly, I'd like to encourage you to support housing rehabilitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Next speaker, G H C.
Yes. I was doing a deep dive into the C D B G funding opportunities, and lo and behold, I found a whole separate section of laws from the federal government called Preserving America. This is for historic preservation specifically. And I'm looking at this neighborhood revitalization category. And the beauty part about this particular grant opportunity through C D B G funds is that they recognize that many historic places are out in the middle of either nowhere or in the middle of a community. And while the community is raising itself up by restorations and other kinds of renovations, increasing the value of the homes, here's this historic piece of property sitting in the middle of it. And this particular set of rules allows for historic preservation on that one spot. No matter that the people around you are making or are not in that 51% of low and middle income, that one spot is eligible for C D B G funding for historic preservation. So this is one of the only set of rules that I've found that understands some of the difficulties of restoring places, because they're not convenient, and they're out of step with what's going on around them. But if you were to be able to see this Lake Hall School, we're still talking about that, you'll find that there's all kinds of development around it, and its particular space is shrinking. We still have descendants on that land, which is still kind of a miracle. But many people are either passing, and they can't, or they can't afford the taxes. But there's still a good bit of property out there owned by descendants, and here's this school sitting right in the middle of it. I want to remind you that it's still, this is one of the national treasures, because it's the only one. There aren't any others, particularly in the South. So the notion that this 1872 school is still sitting there is a miracle in and of itself. So I'm hoping to be able to apply for this, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. C.
Final speaker on this item, Gracie Leland.
Good evening. Gracie Leland, 14988 Leland Circle, Tallahassee. State of Florida retiree, 35 years, Department of Financial Services, Senior Workers Conversations Supervisor, graduate of Old Lincoln High School, 1963, attended lively school, technical bookkeeping and accounting. Volunteer with the Tallahassee Senior Citizens Lunch and Learn, Miki Suki. I am from Miki Suki. This evening, I'm here to, on behalf of my community, and Mr. Marx, in regarding the block grant. I don't know too much about the block grant, but my community is in need of some rehabilitation in our community, and we would like for this to be passed. And I would like to know more about this so I can go back and tell my community about, because they don't know too much about it. And I want to enlighten them on it. And I hope that this block grant is passed. And I hope that you all have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes our speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of staff on this particular item. And I understand there can be no board discussion. So I need a motion and a second.
A move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Commissioner Proctor? Who's Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Oh, aye. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you.
Actually, I got this, the next two items you asked, I like to show my support for items, I believe. The proof item, I was out, I sensed it was not well-connected, so I just got let back into the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, will you show our public hearings that start at 6:00, where we show Commissioner Proctor out of chambers? Will you indicate his vote in the affirmative for us? Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, I believe that concludes our public hearings, and so we're back now on agenda item number 24.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 24, Commissioner seeks your approval to execute a purchase order for Ring Power Corporation for the design and installation of a new power distribution system at the Leon County Detention Center. Piggybacking on a large-scale competitively bid solicitation, this item has a fiscal impact, it's been budgeted and contemplated, and this item, again, by piggybacking on this competitively procured contract and utilizing a comprehensive project management approach, the design and installation of the system will reduce costs by approximately $1 million and will result in a compressed two-year timeline during renovation. This is always important to say about the jail, the facility will remain operational. So with that, Madam Chair, we are recommending option one, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, you move option one? Thank you, staff recommendation. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion from the Commissioners? Hearing none.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say that.
Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that far more is needed for our detention facility. This is one small Band-Aid of a facility that needs to be probably reimagined, and I would support and begin to ask staff to look at the current structure of our jail. And though what we're doing today is merely a Band-Aid, but looking into the future of the 21st century, in so many ways, this structure falls beneath the baseline of facilities, in particular of the mental health sources of people there. And we have the largest mental health facility in all Florida, and it's right there. And I think that we should scale a jail that, when you speak intimately to the detailed needs of how you house and best practices for housing, different category of citizen needs, our jail, it's time for us to begin to lend, it may cause heartburn, but it's time to lend forward thinking to a new vision for the facility that considers age as well as mental condition for in terms of how it's designed, blah, 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 blah. I wanted to add that, and want to say to our staff to please begin to initiate some thought of how we can make our jail a contemporary model going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Let me ask our County Administrator if he can just respond to that.
Just very quickly, it's just a reminder for the Board, the Board, last year, in your budget, included before any comprehensive reinvestment in the facility. Of course, we have ongoing reinvestment there that occurs on a high level year-round, but the Board wished to consult a, an outside national consulting expert to take a look at the facilities and the programmatic opportunities at the jail for improvements. And I just wanted to remind the Board that that'll be coming back at your next meeting in October.
Oh, thank you, Mr. County Administrator, for that update. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say this for the benefit of the people who might be watching at home. During the brief night I had with the County Administrator, we discussed this. This is not an unplanned expenditure. This has been budgeted for and is currently in the Sheriff's fiscal year '24 budgets of the current fiscal year. So I just want to point that out for folks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner Minor. No other comments? Let's vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. It's unanimous. Mr. County Administrator, I believe we're on 25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 25, as requested by the Board, this item provides an analysis on all crimes reported in Leon County with a focus on 32304, and as well as an emphasis on West Pensacola Street. This item details ongoing efforts to combat crime and address nuisance activities on West Pensacola through policy stakeholder engagement, reducing homelessness and promoting economic growth. This item includes actions taken by the Board, such as adopting an ordinance prohibiting unauthorized homelessness, participating in the investment of $2.2 million in a real crime center, funding the host deputies, establishing line item funding for the homeless shelter, and a lot more. It's a very comprehensive item requested by the Board. I've asked Shinkton to provide a brief presentation, including when you can anticipate further board discussion on West Pensacola Street and efforts to address nuisance activities along the corridor. And with that, with the Board's indulgence, we've got a brief presentation. We're happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, County Administrator. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. No PowerPoint for this one. This will be hopefully brief also. As the County Administrator mentioned, so this really broken down into two things in your items of crime data, as well as our ongoing efforts to address the issues on West Pensacola Street. So regarding the crime data first, of course, the Board requested data on all crimes reported in Leon County, with emphasis on 32304, which is provided in the item. And it shows that approximately 33% increase in crimes were reported over the past five years countywide. Larceny, which is the theft of personal property, as well as simple assault, were the most frequent crimes reported each year overall countywide. For the three, that also included 32304 also, those were the main ones. Now, for 32304 zip code area, it did have the most crimes reported, as well as a second per capita. But also, keep in mind that this is also the zip code with the most population in Leon County. It is the majority of residents in the, in 32304 are between the ages of 18 to 34, which signifies the considerable number of college students that live in that area. It also includes our Frenchtown and Griffin Heights neighborhoods. It has the census tracts with the highest poverty rates, lowest percentages of homeownership, lowest median of household incomes. And these are all key indicators of areas that are typically exposed to crime in a community. There's several things that we have going on to address those issues, especially in those neighborhoods I mentioned, like Frenchtown and Griffin Heights, when it comes to addressing generational poverty and working with the city through their Neighborhood First Plans with those projects that we continue to provide the Board updates on, as well as the strategic initiatives that's been adopted by the Board. But also included in 32304, of course, is West Pensacola Street. And as the Board also requested, was solutions to combat crime, which is, and nuisance activities such as panhandling and loitering on West Pensacola Street, which is primarily in the city limits and is a state road. So the item details the ongoing collective efforts with those partners to do just that, that through policy, regularly engaging residents and businesses, reducing homelessness and promoting economic growth. When it comes to combating crimes, Commissioners, as the County Administrator mentioned, one of those things is what happened in 2022, when the Real Time Center, Crime Center was constructed for $2.2 million in partnership with the county, the city, L C S O, and F S U, to improve communication and intelligence sharing and coordination among law enforcement agencies. Over the past two years now, cameras and license plate readers were installed by the city along West Pensacola Street that are connected to the Real Time Crime Center, allowing for more rapid response to, by law enforcement, to address crime and combat crime in the area. T P D increased proactive patrol with more frequent presence to enforce the laws, deter crime, maintain public order, and provide service to the community over the past year. And to address the concerns raised by the residents and businesses regarding crime and nuisance activities, as well as homelessness. On West Pensacola Street, the Sheriff's Office launched Operation Alliance for a three-month period in 2023 by increasing patrol and engaging not just the homeless, but also the businesses and residents in that area. And then they followed that up with Operation Alliance 2.0, which occurred last month for a one-week period that was targeted to patrol areas that were frequented with illicit activities and trespass issues. And this is something that they're continuing to ongoing to look to do, and also schedule future ones also, based on need. On the policy adoption side, Commissioners, it's through policy that the county has taken considerable action to address nuisance activities in the community, including on West Pensacola Street. This includes, like the County Administrator mentioned, adopting the ordinance that's prohibiting unauthorized solicitation on private businesses to address concerns of local businesses, as well as provide law enforcement greater well as provide law enforcement greater, greater authority to reduce such activities in the community, including on West Pensacola Street. We established and funded the host deputy positions to engage homeless individuals that are in encampments and enforce the law when appropriate. Adopted the community campaign in partnership with the city, as well as the COC, to reduce panhandling by installing signs on roadways around our community. And also, as we did earlier, and approved formally again tonight, Commissioners, an address was establishing the line item funding for emergency shelters that provides greater oversight and also ties funding to activities that will help mitigate the impact of homeless clients on West Pensacola Street corridor through programs like the Carney Center has, their Good Neighbor Program, where they have folks on golf carts up and down West Pensacola Street, trying to address those who are engaging those that are homeless, as well as cleaning up areas that are within right of way. On community engagement also is an essential component to combating crime and reducing nuisance activities. And so consistent with our long history of engaging citizens to tackle the most pressing issues of the day, the county has participated in meetings conducted by the city and LCSO with businesses and residents on West Pensacola Street. In order to enhance law enforcement operations, LCSO has been leading quarterly meetings with West Pensacola Street businesses and residents to discuss and gather input on crime, litter, loitering, and panhandling. So building on those meetings that's been held at LCSO, as well as the city too, COC will conduct meetings starting next month with residents and businesses to continue the conversation and develop actions to address crime, litter, loitering, and homelessness and panhandling with the participation, of course, of the county, the city, TPD, LCSO, and our homeless service providers. And all of this, of course, is part of the efforts to reduce homelessness, especially in that corridor, recognizing the significant level of homelessness on that corridor. Because reducing homelessness is critical to coordinated efforts to address the nuisance activities, such as panhandling and loitering. Over the past year now, the county has partnered with the city, the COC, and the homeless providers on this effort. This has included, as I mentioned earlier, Commissioners, the $500,000 in one-time funding that was provided to the Carney Center, which allowed them to expand day services for unsheltered individuals, so we could move them off the streets and into shelter to provide services. And also the deployment of their Good Neighbors Program to reduce loitering and litter on West Pensacola Street. In 2023, the board adopted a strategic initiative to work with the COC and the city on developing corridor plans for areas with high concentrations of homelessness, which includes West Pensacola Street, to better address encampments in those areas, loitering, littering, panhandling, and other activities. These will develop, corridor plans will develop action plans for businesses, for government, for residents in addressing and reducing homelessness in those areas. Those corridor plans are expected to be completed later this year and presented to the board in early part of 2025. And finally, of course, with economic growth and infrastructure improvements, those are key component also of combating crime and addressing nuisance activities on West Pensacola Street. The West Gates, West Side Student Gateway Commissioners, as you may be familiar with, is a blueprint project that will improve the segment of West Pensacola Street between Apple Yard Drive and Capital Circle Southwest with road widening, sidewalks, bike lanes, and lake and landscape medians. This total investment is about $41 million and is currently in the PD and E phase. Most immediately, $10.5 million is being invested by Florida Department of Transportation, again, this is a state road, in FY '25 to resurface West Pensacola Street and improve the roadway. Additionally, there have been about 800 properties that have been rezoned, which have been essential to, on West Pensacola Street, that have been essential to greater commercial development. And as detailed in the item, at least six new businesses have opened, are expected to be open within the next year due to approving, approved rezoning by the city. OEV, Office of Economic Analysis, of course, has been an active participant in the meetings conducted by the sheriff's office, as well as the COC, to promote its programs and services to businesses in attendance that attend those meetings. Through the month of, this month of September, OEV is surveying businesses to get a better understanding on the impact of homelessness on their businesses and will use the survey to, results to enhance financial and technical assistance to the businesses in the area. Also, OEV has actively promoted job opportunities to residents of 32304, which includes West Pensacola Street, as well as other zip codes that have historically experienced high unemployment levels. As the county administrator mentioned earlier, OEV specifically collaborated with Amazon to recruit employees for the Amazon Fulfillment Center in 32301, 32303, and 32304. And so far, nearly half of the employees that have been hired so far come from those specific zip codes. So to wrap up, Commissioners, as we describe in the item, West Pensacola Street has experienced periods of transition throughout its history, right? Started from a World War II era airfield to a major transportation connector anchored now by two of our institutions of higher education in Florida State University and Tallahassee State College. And in the middle, it's filled with student housing, commercial development, government facilities, as well as human service providers. Right now, portions continue to experience economic growth, as can be seen with new housing and businesses, while other parts, to be frank, to be very, very frank, have seen significant decline. So by addressing crime and nuisance activities through policy, through engaging the community, through reducing homelessness, as well as economic development and infrastructure improvement, we can, in coordination and collaboration with our local partners and stakeholders, put us in a position to change the trajectory of those specific parts of West Pensacola Street. It won't happen overnight, and so it will continue with work with our partners, including engaging West Pensacola Street residents and businesses to bring any future recommendations that will enhance the quality of life of the corridor. As I shared before, we anticipate more of these coming back to you as part of those corridor plans that we will be bringing as part of early 2025. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, we have one speaker card on this item. Stanley Sims.
Stanley Sims, unelected mayor of Tallahassee, Florida. I agree with everything you can say, but I have one problem. We have not talked about the high pedestrian traffic on that road. Several people, so what, they homeless. We don't want nobody hit. They have been hit on that road. I understand that there are crime issues. That comes with the package. But I'm concerned that we are not concerned, that these people are getting hit on Pensacola Street, and we up here talking about locking them up, policy, that kind of, and that's got to be done. Don't get me wrong, there's a balance. But I don't hear, when we, we have a high pedestrian area, and I ain't throwing, it ain't my fault that FSU owing three, that ain't got nothing to do with this. But on Tennessee Street, in that high pedestrian area, when those college students was crossing Tennessee Street and that one child got hit, the next week, they put barriers up that prevented those students from crossing that street and forced them to cross at a safe place. Now, that's something that can be done. Now, I don't, well, let me take that back. I think that's something that can be done. Because you did say that's a state road. Is Tennessee Street a state road? Well, that's something can be done. I take that back. Let's, let's not, and I want to say, Christian Caban, you have led this area, you've been on top of it, but the area of, because that Carney Center ain't going nowhere, promise ain't going nowhere, and as long as Carney ain't going nowhere and promise ain't going nowhere, loitering ain't going nowhere. So we need to address all of these things. It needs to be some safety components put in place on Pensacola Street, not even just on Pensacola. We're having accidents hitting on Appalachian Parkway, and that ain't the homeless folks. It's just the college kids just running across the doggone street. So there is a pedestrian problem of safety in this area as well. And I just don't want that to get lost in the scheme, because he has brought some very valid, oh, he has brought some very valid points. But I just want us to know, this ain't just about controlling crime. This is also about keeping our citizens safe.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Anything further, Mr. County Administrator?
We have no further speakers on this. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation of option one. Mr. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For discussion purposes, I'd like to move staff recommendation option one.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get started, I just want to give a sincere thank you to the county administrator and also Shinkton. Anytime Pensacola Street is discussed, you guys have been quick to jump on it. And Shinkton, working after hours at community meetings, I really appreciate you and your team. You guys know how important this is to my district and our office, and honestly, all of Leon County, so I want to thank you. This has been a very frustrating issue for me personally. Part of the reason why I lived on White Drive, I lived on Bellevue Way, and I lived on La Pona Road, and I lived on Ocala Road, all from 2011 to 2017. I currently live right off High Road, which is two big blocks from Pensacola Street. Anybody who lives in Highway 20, any resident that lives pretty much in my district drives on Pensacola Street very frequently. The decline of Pensacola Street has been very visible. Let me correct that. The decline of certain parts of Pensacola Street have been very, very visible. I've had conversations with the county administrator at length of what are our options and what can we do? I've been thinking about this the last 24 hours before this meeting of like, you know, what is the correct direction to go? We've had conversations with, I've had conversations in regards to maybe creating a special taxing district, where we almost make it like a CRA that the county manages to inject dollars into the area to create better jobs and better economic development. After thinking about it, I think really what we need is a West Pensacola Street master plan. I think there needs to be, you know, a 20- to 30-year plan for this corridor, where we talk about, you know, what businesses we want to attract, what our long-term plan is with our, the homeless shelter in that area, what our overall plan is with blueprint that project comes. I think there needs to be a master plan that we're working towards, so that way we can, we can tell folks and we can tell businesses, hey, this is what we're working towards. I think we should look at getting feedback from our constituents. I think we should look at getting feedback from people who live in the area, people who have businesses there. But at this point, you know, we've identified a problem. We know what the problem is. I mean, the crime shows what the problem is. You can drive down Pensacola Street, you can visibly see what the problem is. We've had businesses that have had several break-ins in the last two years. You know, on top of that, we had the May 10th tornadoes come through there, and just businesses that were already struggling just closed shop up. So I'm just very concerned from this area. You know, right now, I have a motion on the table for, you know, to accept the report on the crime analysis, but I really would love some support and some feedback from this board, particularly my at-large Commissioners as well, who overlap in that district. And as far as like, you know, what, what do you think our vision is for it? And if a West Pensacola Street master plan is something that you guys would be open to having staff look at and discuss? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Administrator, traditionally, when we look at master plans, I think we did a North Monroe master plan, didn't we? Did we do that? I think so. What coordination do we have with the city in these master plans? Because, you know, we could create a master plan, but if it's a state road and it's inside city limits, how much, how much master planning can we do? So can you kind of help me work through that?
Sure, yeah. And Madam Chair, Commissioner Maddox, we've certainly heard the discussion here. And I know that our planners are engaged, and I totally, completely understand where Commissioner Caban is trying to go with this. I don't know if it's a, if it's a master plan. What our planning department does very, very well is sort of these sense of place plans too, which incorporates a lot of this stuff, and then even more in terms of including enhancements and that sort of thing. I recognize, and I know you all recognize, this is in the city, and when we've done sense of place plans, that they've primarily been in the unincorporated area. The city, of course, has done very good jobs with those inside the city limits. But I'm sure hearing what the concerns are from the board, that if it's the will of the board, our planning, our joint planning staff could bring back some, some ideas along those lines to propose to you. Again, they're very good, very talented, and they're listening to what you're saying. So it could be something that we could bring back.
Motion for an agenda item or you just put it on the staff?
That would be ideal.
I like the idea is just to create a sense of place, like we did, let's say, in Mekahsuki. We had a sense of place, but it's unincorporated. So we, what we planned, we could do to create a sense of place on West Pensacola, which is in the side of city limits. How much authority will we have to be able to do the things that we are putting on that sense of place plan? And how much coordination will we need from the city to actually, you know, coordinate and actually implement some of the things that we're having? Is this a, is this a joint thing? Is this something that we ask the city to consider? Trying to figure out what kind of authority we have here.
And I think a lot of that is what we would be looking to bring back to you all to have a discussion about.
Okay. So I would be, I would be willing to have a conversation around, if you wanted to, you know, what it would look like, agenda item, come back to ask what it would look like for us to do a sense of place plan in coordination with the city, given the fact that West Pensacola is in the city, and see what they would be, if they would be willing to play ball with us on that. I would, I would, I would be okay with that.
Can we entertain then an amendment to the motion on the floor to include bringing the agenda item back? Did you move?
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay. Who seconded?
I did.
Oh, okay. You willing to accept amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
Instead of that, I was just going to include, and I think it's in the spirit of where Commissioner Caban was going, and anything else that are from the planning department along those lines.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Is that, okay.
To clarify, right, all options to look at what we can do, whether it's special taxing districts, master plan, changing zoning property, just a plan for the corridor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Okay. So we have an amended motion on the floor. What's the second? Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Caban, as you're describing, as you're making your remarks, I see the similarities between what you're dealing with on West Pensacola and what I've been focused on on North Monroe. And, you know, even, even some of the thought process you've gone through to try to figure out what the next step is, are some of the things I've thought about too for North Monroe. I support the motion on the table. I think it's, I think it's necessary. I mentioned a couple of meetings ago how, how West Pensacola is, is an area of concern for Leon County and the city of Tallahassee, and it needs to be. You know, a couple of things. Commissioner Maddox is right. We didn't have a master plan for North Monroe, but we've had two citizens initiatives that were organized by the planning department, one in 2016, I think, and then the other just a couple of years ago, which, which were terrific. You basically get citizens that represent the area or have an interest in the area. They meet with planning staff like five or six times over the course of several months, and then they help kind of help formulate what the needs are. I found that really helpful for North Monroe. That might be one option that we might have in the agenda item that comes back to us. Another thing that you might want to think about, and I've had discussions with this with the planning department, is with the comp plan changes we might be coming through. I mean, there are ways where we can take a look at our zoning to help encourage growth that stimulates the economy along West Pensacola. I've had discussions with Artie White about, you know, how that, how some of those proposals that are coming to us might apply for North Monroe and how we can help kind of guide development in North Monroe that elevates the entire area. So I think that's probably coming pretty soon, too. And so those are just some ideas. But I support the motion on the floor. I agree with you. I think it's an area that this community needs to focus on. Some parts are doing well, but other parts are not. And we've got to work And we've got to work together as a community to address them, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Maddox, thank you for bringing, refreshing my memory on that. Because I couldn't remember if it was a master plan, there were some census meetings, but, but you led those, and I appreciate your efforts on that. As I'm looking at it, I'm thinking about it, they do have similar issues, North Monroe and, and West Pensacola Street. But again, both of them are within the city limits. My, my thought goes to, well, why wouldn't we just have a agenda round, agenda item fashioned around both of them to see what can be accomplished in the way of sense of place or master planning in combination with the city for both places? Because, because, I mean, Commissioner Maddox, I can't see us having this agenda item coming up with a sense of place for West Pensacola. What I envision is that the very next meeting or at the end of the meeting, you will come back and ask us to do the same thing on, on North Monroe Street, because you said it. I mean, you're dealing with the same issue. So I'm wondering if we could, Commissioner Caban, have the agenda item to come back, focus on both West Pensacola and North Monroe Street to explore the idea of sense of place or master planning or whatever options that we have there to, to address similar issues that exist on, in both corridors. And, and again, I think this does not happen without partnership from the city of Tallahassee. If it comes back and, and we have, we make all these plans, but there's no concept of how, of implementation of what the city may be willing to do, I can't, I can't say that I would support that. Or if it comes back and the city says that they want to take the lead on these two things, these two ideas, and just have us be partner in it, then I could go with that. But, but they, this does not work without the city being involved. I, I do want to make that very clear. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Maddox. So Commissioner Caban, Commissioner, do you want to amend the amendment to include the North Monroe corridor? And just, okay, so moved, and you accept the amendment. Okay. Awesome. Any other discussion? And I just want to thank staff and Shinkton. I mean, this is a, it's a great report. We might not like the numbers that say, okay, we've got an increase here, we've got an increase there over five years. But it's a great report. It is, it's factual. And I just want to commend the partnership with the sheriff, the host sheriff, with the city, with the continuum of care, with, with county, with, with all the parts and partnership that has come together to, to address that corridor and also specifically look at homeless population to see what, what we can do in conjunction with the Kearney Center to address some of those issues. So the amended motion on the floor includes option one. All of those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor, you there?
I want to say aye, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I did want to comment on this, but I apologize.
Okay. Do you want to comment, Commissioner Proctor?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to ask staff to ask the sheriff's office to, the scale of totaling the crimes, those 2019 sheets are not, are not the same. I'm troubled that there's only, in 2019, there's only one DUI. No DUIs in, in the 32304. Traffic offenses are only one that year. I'm, I'm just concerned at things that you would expect there to be categories for. And also from 2019, 20, 21, 22, 23, those numeric categories are not consistent. They're not the same. So we've been given information that we can't follow year to year on, let's say like rate. Some categories, we have like 1, 2, 3 from the top, top of the page. Then we go down to 1 year, it's forcible rate. I, I'm not sure it, I mean, I know what statutory rate is, distinguish from forcible rate. But we just need some categories to stand still. We need this reporting zigzag. And I would ask for, in particular between the two pages of CY 2019, there is inconsistency there. One year, we've got 170, 170 forcible rates. Well, the other years, we've got 67, we've got 54, and we've got a number of, of 61. I don't know how you go to 170 something and scale up 100. And that's not been epidemic, that's not been reported. So I, I just think that the numbers are, I'm not, I'm not sure what they convey. That's all I'm saying. These numbers are not clear in my mind. Do I vote to support what, what, what we're reporting, what we're reporting? The numbers are not clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. So you're voting in affirmative. But let me ask, Mr. County Administrator, can we look at those pages of concern?
Sure. I, I think a lot of the data that we've presented, some of which, some of it may require additional explanation. But we can certainly do that, and we can always use the assistance of, oh, Shinkton looks like he's jumping at the bit. So let me see.
Okay.
I'll just share, we're hearing what the commissioner's saying on the phone. The first portion of data is just LCSO. That's just Leon County Sheriff's Office. So that was just, just show those reports through them. And then the next group is Tallahassee Police Department. So it's bifurcated in that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Shinkton. So we have two, our two law forces.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think that the Tallahassee Police should be on there on the latter end. This should not be on the Leon County Sheriff's Office. And I'm not sure what y'all looking at, but one, two. I mean, five, six pages that, I don't see anything from TPD. I don't have that, that bifurcation. And I'm looking at attachment one. I just don't have it. So all of it is, is a form. Page eight.
Yeah, page eight of, there should be a, a break, a page break that says Tallahassee Police Department. And so it was LCSO that we worked with for the data. So all the, the data after that is all TPD. It's not LCSO. LCSO is who helped us in working with TPD in collecting the data, even though it does say LCSO at the top. It is TPD.
Okay. Well, TPD only gives us 2019 summary.
No, so.
We, we have, we only have 2019 summary from TPD. And we have numbers up from 19 all the way to 23.
So it was 2019, so the date. So 2019 is what's shown under page nine, but then on page 10, it shows 2021. It goes by zip codes based on the data that we were able to collect. It will show you 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023 for each of the zip codes. And all that data, Commissioner, for page 10 and page 11 are all TPD. For 2020 through 2023.
I didn't know why you all put this here. Couldn't be intended to read it. The print is well too small for me to see. I'm honestly, this is imperceptible to the human eye. It's so small. So I'm not able to read it. So thus, no comprehension. It's just, this is much too small. And, but I trust that the figures are there, and I know that staff's integrity is in place. But I'm unable to perceive it because I just can't scope within my eyeballs the size of this writing. Thank you very kindly. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. But maybe we can have those pages enlarged for you. I've got mine on my iPad, and I can see it really well. So can we?
I'm looking at a sheet of paper.
Okay. Yeah. Maybe we can have those enlarged, and then if we need to, you know, come back and address. Once you're able to see it, if we need to address it, we can. Is that okay, Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll get you those pages. Okay? We got a motion on the floor. I think we halfway voted, but we'll go back again. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be, I'll be quick. I just want to point something out. So have some good news about Pensacola Street and North Monroe. You know, one way to help elevate an area is to bring more public investment to that, improve the infrastructure, which encourages more private investment and, and has a whole cascading effect. At yesterday's CRTPA meeting, the Florida Department of Transportation representative had some great news on both Pensacola Street and North Monroe. You may know this already, Commissioner Caban. FDOT is going to, probably in early 2025, do resurfacing of Pensacola. It's about 4.6 miles, a stadium drive. And to Mr. Sims's point, they're going to be adding two mid-block crossings, which will help with the safety issues that you brought up. And then also got an update on the North Monroe sidewalk project. That's about 1.8 miles of new sidewalk on the west side of North Monroe from Lake Shore to John Knox. So that's going to be starting construction in December 2024. So good news on both Pensacola Street and Monroe. It, it doesn't directly address the crime issues and the economic issues that we talked about, but indirectly, it does help. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for that information. And, and it looks like, you know, we're inching our way, we're addressing the problems. They didn't come overnight, and we're not going to be able to resolve them overnight. But little by little, we will get there. So we're going to vote on the motion on the floor. We had a second amendment with option one. Let's just vote again. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Commissioner Proctor, I believe you voted aye as well.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'm going to point out, I was just wondering, point of information, what was the distinction of the West Pensacola Sector Plan that was shown to us? And the ask coming from Commissioner Caban, what distinguishes the literature in front of us now versus what the combined thing of North Monroe Corridor and West Pensacola together? Let me just understand the policy distinction and what we're doing.
Okay. I think with our amended motion, we're requesting an agenda item to come back that addresses the North Monroe Corridor as well as West Pensacola. The original amended motion only addressed, what, Tennessee? I'm sorry, Tennessee, West Pensacola Street, right. But we asked for an agenda item to come back. Since they're both similar, we've had issues on both quarters with, with lottery and homelessness. And we've got our host sheriffs in both areas. We're working in conjunction with the city. So this item is just basically asking for staff to bring back an agenda item that addresses both quarters. That's all. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, absolutely. It addresses and gives us some options. Is that okay, Commissioner Proctor? You okay with that? You understand where we're going? Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much. Ms. County Administrator, I believe we're now on agenda item 26.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, as directed by the board at the March 19 meeting, this item provides an update and analysis on street naming, renaming options to honor former President Barack Obama pursuant to the Uniform Street Naming Ordinance. Since the board last discussed this issue, the city adopted an ordinance restricting the county's ability to rename streets within the unincorporated area. They, they assumed that responsibility through their new ordinance. And therefore, only those roadways that are maintained by the county would be our jurisdiction to rename. The analysis describes, describes the process of renaming and provides several streets for the board's consideration, along with the number of impacted properties associated with street namings. The analysis also provides the board with the option to consider honorary designations of other roadways other than the official street renaming process. Should that be something the board wishes to consider? All of the information is provided in the analysis. Of course, we're seeking board direction on this item. Commissioners, we're with that. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. We do have one speaker on this item, Stanley Sims.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Stanley Sims, 1320 Avondale Way. Yes, we can. I stand in support. I want to cheat a little bit because it's getting dark. And I promise to share in my current situation, when it get dark, I'll go home. So I'm supervised by my wife. I, I just want to, let me say something. You all were talking about fees for, for the shelter. And I got to put this on record. When I was small, we lived in Havana. But every day, we woke up and drove to Tallahassee. My mama bought gas in Tallahassee. My mama bought my school clothes in Tallahassee. My mama worked in Tallahassee. What am I saying? I'm saying that even though we live in Gaston County, we contributed to this economy in Leon more than we did in Gaston. And we're not coming because we don't like the colors in the rooms that they have in the shelters in Gaston, because they don't have any. So now if you're going to tax these people, and have you ever stood on 27:00 in the morning, Highway 90, Crawfordville Highway, and watched the number of cars that drive in to Leon County? Where do those people eat lunch? Where did it? Until we could afford, because the only reason we ain't living here, because it's cheaper to live in Gaston. And it ain't just Gaston. You, you, why don't you pull your own Leon County employees? You got some, you got some Georgia folks work from y'all. They come all the way from Cairo. So I just don't want us, and there needs to be, wait, Mr. Shinkton, because he's my friend, he's my cousin. There, there does need to be a deterrent. But I'm familiar with Gaston. I know I can speak for Gaston. They don't purposely say, hey, don't come to our shelter, go to Leon's shelter. What they say is, we don't have any shelters. The closest one is Leon County. That's what they say. And so I just, and me being from Gaston County, and I'm, I'm looking good today. Even the county attorney told me I looked a little dapper, but I'm polled. And I've been polled before. And the way I look at this economy, if we don't vote right, I might be polled again. So I just want to make sure that we don't put this bar up so high that we have people that we're not helping. I'm going home because it's getting a little dark. I appreciate y'all, and I love y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Do we have any other speakers, Mr. County Administrator? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Proctor amended the motion that brought this item back to us. And I would like to see the whites in his eyeballs when we take this up. So if I could, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until Commissioner Proctor can be in attendance physically at our meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry. What item are you talking about? Number 26?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. The street naming?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I see. So you made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's second? Okay. Is it in a discussion to bring it back at our next meeting, you think?
If Commissioner Proctor can be in attendance.
Oh, you just want to table it?
Table it until Commissioner Proctor can be in attendance.
Just here?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Commissioner Proctor?
With a great big chuckle, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just, just for the record again, that was a table, not continue. I'm sorry. Table, aye. Yes, thank you.
Ms. County Administrator, I believe we own number 27. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item seeks the board approval of two reappointments to the LCRDA. Board of Governors, as recommended by the LCRDA Nominating Committee, we're recommending option one.
Second.
Thank you. In a discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote, Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you. The two recommendations as presented or accepted. Ms. County Administrator, I believe we own number 28.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 28, Commissioner seeks your full board consideration of reappointments to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Big Bend Health Council, COCA, the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group, the Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and the Leon County Planning Commission. Those options are provided to in options one through nine, and happy to facilitate if needed, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept options one, two, four, seven, four, five, seven, and eight. And that's basically accepting those recommendations as presented. And then I'd like to take up the other two separately. So there's one, two, four, five, seven, and eight. And it was moved by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by, okay, Commissioner Welch. In a discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Now I'd like to entertain option number three. And I'd like to move the appointment of Holly McPhail. And I understand as a chair, I don't give up my right to move. Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner. Second by Commissioner Caban. In a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I'd like to take up Item Number 9.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Jason Nauman.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be unusual, and then normally these are very straightforward, but I will say that I oppose the nomination of Mr. Nauman. While he is clearly a respected real estate professional, he's the only applicant who has a clear disclosed conflict and would require a two-thirds vote to waive that conflict, and that would, in his application as a states, because of perhaps some of his real estate dealings, would have to recuse himself from planning commission votes when we have two very qualified candidates without conflicts. And so I will make a substitute motion to appoint Javana Parker.
Okay, it's been moved in second for Javana Parker. Any discussion? Commissioner Welch?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Keefe obviously can't vote for that. Mr. Nauman is one of the most respected real estate developers in our community. He has been passed over once for this planning commission seat. He is a dedicated community businessman. He builds some of the nicest, most well-preserved communities in the district, including, I mean, in the county, including in your district. And I think it would be, I think his application states that those conflicts are going to be virtually nonexistent. So I will not be able to support the substitute motion, and will reaffirm my support for Mr. Nauman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I remember it, Ms. Attorney Parker, I believe, was a former member of the Planning Commission. Correct, Madam Chair?
Javana Parker? That's the name?
I think it is. She is? Because I believe she was.
Former member of the County Commission?
No, no, of the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
And as I remember it, I think she had perfect attendance and was a pretty good member. I know Mr. Nauman, and I respect him, but I think I might have to go with the substitute motion just based off the fact that if Ms. Parker's interested and was a former member and with stellar attendance and a contributing member, I would like to have her back. So I think I would support the motion on the floor, the substitute motion.
The substitute motion? Okay.
Can anybody, can somebody confirm that for me?
Anybody have information? She, her application did state Planning Commission experience?
Right.
I don't recall if that specified which planning commission.
What, Planning Commission?
She was previously on the Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission, yes.
Previously on the Planning Commission?
Yes. I don't know if she had a perfect attendance. I don't have those records on me, but I know that she did attend regularly and have issues with her not showing up.
Thank you.
Does she have any disclosed, Madam Chair, does she have any disclosed conflicts of interest?
I don't believe so, not on her application.
Yes, ma'am. Very well.
Thank you. And Madam County Attorney, can I address Commissioner O'Keefe? And I know that motion is not on the floor, but he indicated perceived conflict with Jason Newman. It's supposed to be, yes, ma'am?
Yes, Madam Chair. So under the Code of Ethics, someone who, by virtue of their business, employment, relationship, could have a conflict, has to disclose that, which Mr. Nauman has done. The statutes provide that for appointed positions, the appointing authority can waive that conflict by two-thirds vote, and we've seen that occasionally, and that's always delineated in your agenda item when that is an issue and a two-thirds vote is required. But yes, if any projects that Mr. Nauman, because of his business, could be implicated in a matter that comes for the Planning Commission, he would be required to recuse from voting. It's kind of similar to what Mr. Maddox does or any of you commissioners do if you have a similar conflict that comes before the County Commission.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Any other comments? And so now we're on the substitute motion for the appointment of Javana Parker. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need a roll? Of any, let me see, any opposition?
No.
Okay, so we've got two noes. Commissioner Proctor?
Please, a second. Aye.
Aye, okay, so we've got one. Okay, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 ayes and 2 noes, so I believe that passes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator, I believe we're on now Item 31.
I believe, Madam Chair, that concludes.
Did I add an item?
If we made it through all of those appointments, I'm trying to see that we got them all, but it looks like, it looks like we did.
I think we did. Okay, 31 was a public hearing, so we've already done that. That's double check, make sure. We good?
Well, we skipped the six in the numbering, so we've got them all. We got it all. We got all the direction we need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. County Administrator. I think, Commissioners, now we are at mission time, discussion time. Madam County Attorney, do you have anything you'd like to raise with the body?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing more. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for a great meeting. I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to hear one speaker.
Okay, we've got the backup. We've got another speak on what, non-agenda item?
We do, and sorry about that, folks, but a lot of speaker cards up here tonight. We do have one speaker on the non-agenda items, Jim Patton with Tallahassee Racker Owners.
Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off, we aren't funded by anybody. We don't have a staff to prepare stuff for us. We are here to address our local towing ordinance, the Leon County Ordinance. We've made some corrections to our proposed ordinance. Number one is to remove trespass towing from our county ordinance because City of Tallahassee has an ordinance that addresses that. They have a wrecker administrator that takes care of that. In our county ordinance, we have trespassing towing as the first thing. That's known as towaways. We're not here about that. We're here about working wrecks in the street. We're working on rates that have been in place for over 10 years. We've got to amend our rate structure. We also have conflicts now because new laws were passed by the State of Florida the 1st of July, creates some other conflicts. They're minor, but they need to be corrected. The biggest thing is the money. Costs have gone up tremendously in the last 10 years. We have a new proposed rate. I'm sure that this is going to take review by all of y'all to look at our amended one. But we don't have any other way. We tried with wrecker administrators. What did we do to get back to y'all? All we were told was go to the commission, so we're here. There are, I see five of the 15 wrecker services in this room. All 15 wrecker services on CDA have signed this letter. They elected me to be the one to speak against my own wishes, but I'm here. We've got to address this issue. It's to the point that we almost can't afford to run the rotation calls, which means all the wrecks in the street. I actually make more money when I tow your car to a repair shop now than I do working to wreck in the street. We've got to address this. It's way backwards. Storage rates have been in place for a long time. 25 years ago, we got $20 a day storage. It was raised to $25 a day 20 years ago, 18 years ago. We used to pay $600 a month rent back then for two and a half acres with a 6,000 square foot building on it. You know what that is today? We're at $25 a day storage. Storage back then used to pay our rent. That same property today is $5,000 a month. We're still getting $25 a day storage. We've got a lot of rates that are way backwards. All of the rates in this ordinance, we've proposed approximately a 50% increase in, except storage, we've asked basically to double. I know this will take review. It's not something you could pass tonight, but this is our starting point to get us in front of you and get this into works. Some of us with the towing industry are willing to work with whoever at a meeting or a get-together or whatever to go over all of this. We can explain it all. We can explain where our numbers come from. Just the cost of tow trucks has gone up tremendously. My insurance personally went from 12 years ago, $8,000 a year, to now I'm $26,000 a year for me and one truck. Okay? We present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and I understand this will be, is already an agenda item, Mr. County Administrator?
Commissioners, based on your previous direction, this item will be back before you at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Is there any other speakers, non-agenda item? Thank you so much. Commissioner Caban?
Madam Chair, is this my commissary discussion time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have something I would like to discuss. I have a motion prepared. Before I get to the motion, I kind of want to leave some breadcrumbs for some discussion. One thing that we've discussed frequently in today's meeting, we've discussed it in multiple meetings, and all that stuff, projects on Pensacola Street, Monroe Street, Commissioner Proctor, you've mentioned your, and the fairgrounds and what you want to do there, and all these things take money. And I think there are missed opportunities that we could be seeking from the state budget appropriation cycle. For example, Highway 20, last year, I did a traffic study which showed that Highway 20 needs $2.5 million in improvements, and that has to come from state allocations. And so right now, I think we have a fantastic lobbying team that has done a great job for Leon County in regards to policy, but I still think we're missing an opportunity from state budget appropriation cycles. I don't think Leon County is receiving enough money from the state budget on an annual basis when comparing it to other like-sized counties. And so I have an idea, and what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion for staff to publish an RFP to add an additional lobbying team as a one-year contract as a trial, with the main evaluation criteria should be the firm's capabilities in delivering state budget funds for their clients, and the contract value cannot exceed one year in value for a current lobbying contract. And let me be specific, this is not to replace our current lobbying team, but to work as an additional lobbying team.
Okay, so before we get a second, your motion is that we issue an RFP not for an agenda item to come back, to address it and give us some options on it?
Do we need an agenda item, or can we initiate the RFP process now in this meeting?
Well, I would be, I would want us to really have staff look at it rather than us as a body voting for an RFP to be issued.
Okay.
You know, we have obligations now with lobbyists, so I think they would look at those obligations to see if there is room. So I would probably be more supportive if the motion is for an agenda item to come back, for staff to look at it, as opposed for us to vote for an RFP to be issued.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. So we could bring back, we could bring back an agenda item, we could bring back an agenda item to look at, would it be to look at state appropriations to compare Leon County and what we receive in state appropriation from other like-sized counties, and to see if an RFP would be necessary?
And I would add, in light of any contractual obligations we might already have with lobbyists, would that be appropriate, Madam Attorney, Mr. County Administrator? We would have to look at all of that.
We would just include all that, all that information for your consideration.
Okay, awesome.
If that, if that's what passed.
Yes, that's what, okay. So is there a second for an agenda item to come back? You second it, Commissioner Proctor?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment on it.
Okay. I'm going to have Commissioner Welch comment, then I'll have you, Commissioner Proctor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Caban, so I can get some clarification on what your general idea is, if I heard you right. We want, and I don't disagree with your sentiment, I think that you're saying like, you want to do an RFP for an additional lobbying team under like a one-year, is that what you said? One-year contract kind of thing, or?
Yeah, please.
Madam Chair, ma'am?
Please.
Yes, my thought process is there are, there's a common denominator in a lot of these projects we have in Leon County. I think there's projects in all of our districts that are either state roads or could be applicable for state appropriations that I do not think we're currently being aggressive enough to go after. I think we have a fantastic lobbying team. I think they do a great job, especially when it comes to advocating for policy. My proposition would be looking at, hey, let's bring on an additional lobbying team with their sole target is to go after the state budget and appropriations.
Yes.
Can I clarify?
Yes, thank you. I think it's a good idea, frankly. I do agree that our current lobbying team, I think, does a good job. I was skeptical of them three years ago, four years ago, not necessarily of them, just of the process, but I think that, I think we all realize that there's a lot of money across the street, okay? And that is a dynamic environment where every two years, you're getting new bodies over there of legislative elected officials. And I would be interested to see what an analysis on an item that comes back and sort of looks at allocations for a county like Leon versus a county like, you know, what's a like-sized county of a different political persuasion? I don't know. But...
Lot of dynamics, other than lobbyists. But yes, we'd bring back that information.
I would be interested to see that information. I think that we probably are missing out on some funds across the street, which I would like to see us get. I think that Dr. Sharkey and his team do a good job of keeping us informed on the constant, you know, threats to term limitation and all the other things that come from across the street. I know that FAC does some work in that regard, but I think it helps to have a team on the ground there that's dealing with that and reporting back to us as individuals even. But yeah, I agree with you, so I'll support the motion. I want to see what that analysis looks like, and I think that, I mean, if we, if we say we're going to do an RFP for, just see what it would cost us, and then see if there's a return on that investment, ooh, man, I mean, that could be very eye-opening. So, and it may be a situation where you have to pivot your lobbying effort year to year, depending on who's the speaker and who's the Senate President or whatever it may be, but I'd like to see that information, so I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the question of the County Administrator, who probably may know this. When does our current lobbying contract end? I think it's a three-year term, but I don't know when the three years ends.
I think, I think we have an expiration of a term in October this year, and then we've got a couple of add-ons. Nikki, you want to come on up just to make sure, check me on this?
The original term concludes at the end of this month with the option of automatic renewals for two more years. Automatic renewal, for one year.
For one more year.
And then an additional year after that.
Okay.
So it's at the end of this month, it ends automatic renewal for two years, so we basically would have... we basically would have contract until 2026. So the agenda item, Mr. County Administrator, would look at all of that, look at all of that. Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think, as Commissioner Welch has said, I think our lobbyists are doing a good job. I, I reach out to them frequently on a few, on a number of different things, and they're very responsive. I think they're very good at keeping us updated on some of the key policy issues. I'll support the, I'll support the motion coming back, not because I think we need to issue an RFP, but because of the other element in your agenda item, which is taking a look at the appropriations. As, I think as Commissioner Welch, I think county administrators, I mean, there are a lot of dynamics here, other than just simply our lobbying team that are at play. But, but I'll support the motion because of, I'd like to see the comparison of how we do compared to other counties. At this point, I'm, I'm not ready to, to support the RFP piece right now, but it's all one motion, so I'll support the motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Maddox.
It looks like, Madam Chair, it, it looks like by count, this motion is going to pass, but if it's going to pass, I have a few questions. One, I do understand that at the end of the month, the contract ends with the option to renew, which means that if we wanted to go after RFP, we could go after RFP and just not extend the contract. But I don't think there's a desire here by anyone to do that. So if this thing is going to pass, the question I have is, if we're looking to add an additional contract, what, how are we, how are we in relation to other counties when it comes to spending on lobbying? Is, is our, is our contract in line with, and this could be, this could all be a part of the item.
This would all be part of the analysis. We'd be happy to bring back.
You know, where are we on the spending with like-sized counties? How, how are our appropriations when it comes to the appropriations we get with like-sized counties? What, what do we measure appropriations by? And do, does, you know, things that we're going to get from FDOT anyway, does that go to appropriations, or is there some kind of measurement that you have, Mr. Administrator, that, that, that deciphers between things we were, we knew we're going to get versus things that actually came as a result of the team that we have working on appropriations? I want this to be a very thorough item, because here's the thing, if there is a return on the investment, great, we win, right, if we go down this road. But if there is not, and we are outspending like-sized counties with two firms, when other like-sized counties only have one firm, then people will question our ability to really be fiscally responsible in this area. And so I just want to make sure that, that as we go down this road, that we have all the information, and that we can quantify, and that staff can quantify where we've been and where we're trying to go. The other piece of it is, you know, if, at the end of the month, we figure out, or this agenda item comes back and it says, hey, we just, we just, we just want to put out RFP just for services, we just put out RFP for services, because again, it, this contract ends at the end, at the end of the month, which, again, we've had commissioners here, and even Commissioner Caban said, we, we, we're okay with the people that we got. I just, I really want to make sure that when this thing comes back, it doesn't become, you know, Leon County is spending three hundred thousand dollars, whereas other county, like, like-sized counties spending a hundred thousand, and then when we look at the return at the end of, at the end of the session, we don't get that return that we expect. Now, do I think we could? I think we could, but you, but you're asking me to go off what-ifs. And if I'm going to go off what-ifs, I got to have all the, all the facts and all the numbers.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And I think I have some concerns as well, and, and I think Mr. Sharkey and his, his group, Pittman Law Group, I think they do a service for, for the commission, but I think I support Commissioner Caban. You know, we can always look and do a comparison to just see comparing our county to other counties, is whose lobbying services is concerned. So I don't think it, it will hurt anything, it will, if nothing else, it will inform us, but once we have all the facts, then we can decide to move forward. I wouldn't want to haphazardly sit here tonight and vote for the issuance of a request for proposal without more facts to, to support that. So I'm, I will support Commissioner Caban's motion for an agenda item to come back for our own information, our own, own knowledge, and that way we can move forward in a more informed manner. Let me let Commissioner Caban, he had his hand up, let me let him adj, briefly.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to be very clear, in no way, shape, or form am I trying to remove our current contract, right? I did not know that it was up for, for renewal, and I would, are we able to get that circulated to the commissioners after, after the meeting by chance, Madam Attorney? For me, it's, this is what it boils down to. I want money from the state budget for our constituents in Leon County, right? Yes, we get money already from the state in certain areas like FDOT, I don't remember which commissioner brought that up, right? But there are certain things, certain projects, right, some projects that may not even be before us yet, right? I don't think we are tapping into the state budget enough, and, I mean, Leon County taxpayers pay into that. If we can spend X amount of dollars to add an additional team and make, you know, fifty X on that, it's a good investment, it's a good deal, right? And so that's why in my original motion, I had just a one-year trial, just to see what happens, right? Like Commissioner Welch said, a lot of politics is relationships, and state government, you know, power dynamic changes, and different people are in charge of different appropriations. I think we owe it to Leon County taxpayers.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban.
Briefly.
Okay.
On point, briefly, Madam Chair.
Very, very brief, Commissioner Maddox. And then Commissioner Proctor, did you want to make a comment as well?
I'm still there.
Oh, you're still there. Commissioner Maddox, real brief.
Just, just, just for my information only, Mr. Administrator, so, the contract ends at the end of the month. What is the process by which, so we have to renew, because if we, if we're taking this up next month?
Automatic two-year renewal?
Automatic two, no, automatic one-year renewal. If we're taking this up next month, then will the renewal happen before we take this up?
Presumably unless we provided.
Provide thirty-day notice in advance of your, of our intent to not renew.
And we haven't.
So, so renewal is already in place?
Yes.
Because we, because we didn't do thirty days. So, so they're already renewed, okay.
Right.
Right. So what is, what is the clause to get out of? Is there any clause for us to get out of the contract?
Cost, no.
Any clause? If we, if we decide that we want to just go out and RFP, can we do that?
If the agreement weren't being met, so their services weren't being provided, but otherwise, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Then we probably have to give notice so many days of our position that the terms of the contract are not being met. Have to put them on notice, right?
I just want to, responding to something that Commissioner Maddox brought up just a minute ago. The commissioners, I, I need to tell you, this is the way we structured our contracts for years at the counties. So we, we did use to bring on two teams, one for policy, one for appropriations. We did that for a long, long time. We, we went away from it, came back, but things are cyclical sometimes, and you change things up, and again, we'll include all that in the analysis.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Now, I need to hear from Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, the county has not signed a contract with Sharkey Group that is an exclusive or which forbids us or prohibits us from hiring any other firm. That, that, that is not in place. What Commissioner Caban has asked is that we retain and keep that organization in place.
Absolutely.
And he's asking, can we seek, can we seek to, explore an addition? Now, I, I don't want to throw rocks or hurt nobody's feelings, but sometimes if you ask the question, does the Florida State Football Team, which we all agree is a very good team, but could it use an additional running back right now, an additional quarterback or some receivers? Quite possibly, it could use some. We're not saying that Sharkey is in the state of Florida State Football, but we're saying he could use some additional help. And I think that the key word that was identified was the word relationship. When Commissioner Maddox uses the word, looking at a like-size and like-county, you have to throw that out. Our county administrator said that, I think I saw that our per capita, per capita number of hires, employees per one thousand people equals six, which makes up the lowest in the state of Florida. Six out of one thousand citizens, if I remember that sheet right. Additionally, we were reported to tonight that we have the largest amount of property that's exempt off the books, we can't even tax. So looking at a like-sized county, when we are already leading the state in, in properties that is not even taxable, you can't compare that, is no, throw that out. So what counts here is, we are under state occupation, and we also under federal occupation for the amount of property twenty percent of the federal government owns that we can't even tax. So relationships, twenty billion dollars, and right now, you can't use a ten-pound test line going fishing for big fish on a ten-pound test. It ain't enough line. So hundred thousand dollars, we're not going to be boo-hooed and laughed at for investing in, in any other firm, which is an investment, because Mr. Sharkey has more than returned the value of what we put. Mr. Sharkey is underpaid, Mr. Sharkey's firm does not get relative to what they bring, they don't get a sizable enough portion back. But that ain't my argument, that's his argument, that ain't mine. If he, he knows his value, and he agrees to what he works for. But commissioners, we need to move forward. How come? We need to move forward because what we need is bigger thinking, we need bigger delivery, we need larger ideas, because we need a convention center, we need a fairground completed, we need that, that road across the finish and other things that what we got in place and what we got in place is not delivering, and time waits for nobody. Twenty billion dollars sitting across the street, but it's a combination, it's not, it's not a lot, you can go over there with just anybody with your pocket, it's a combination. You got to know the right person, who knows the right person that knows the right person to get this money. So expanding the scope of who we got representing us in a red, blood-red domain, and we as a blue, blue county, y'all, we getting stiff. Let's be honest, we getting stiff, and we in a hostile territory in our own community because we occupied by red. So I am deeply for expanding and getting some running backs and some quarterbacks and some folks who can get this thing moved to another level. Our community is suffering because we are thinking small, but we need the money from across the street, and I'm supporting this, and I'm asking you, when this thing come back, we going to keep Sharkey because we need him? We need to find whoever else out there because we need that. We can't stay in place and get peanuts in return for all that we give to this state. In this federal government, we need the land, and they done gave American Indians land. Why can't the citizens of Leon County get some of this land? Everybody getting some but us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We underasking.
I think we all on the same page. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Okay, all those in favor?
That's a lonely phone booth.
And I think everything you addressed, hopefully the agenda item, County Administrator is nodding his head, the agenda item will address those. Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor for the agenda item to come back? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I believe during commission time, it has to be unanimous anyway. Right. Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, that's for the agenda. During commission time, it doesn't have to be just majority. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything for the Commissioner Caban?
No, Madam Chair, that's it.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Tomorrow is the Florida Association of Counties Innovation Policy Conference, and at that conference, we'll be talking for the first time about FAC proposals that have been submitted by, by counties throughout the state. One that I submitted deals with having Florida join the Southern Rail Commission. You know, having passenger rail go through North Florida has been a legislative priority for, of ours for many years. After talking with people with, with knowledge of this area, one thing they mentioned is that the first big solid step you should take is having Florida join the Southern Rail Commission. This is a commission of three member states, Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, who have worked together to draw down federal dollars for restoration of passenger rail. In fact, the SRC just recently got, last year, one hundred and seventy-eight million dollars from the federal government to help restore passenger rail that goes from New Orleans to Mobile, Alabama. So there's a track record of success with the SRC. What I have here is the proposal that I'll be talking about at the conference in Pensacola. One question, as I think you all know, is, is, does your current, does your home county, Board of County Commissioners support this proposal? Now, I know we have also supported the restoration of passenger rail from North Florida. What this does is specifically request Florida to join the SRC. So this is not on the agenda, of course, so this would have to be unanimous, but I'm having a motion to have the board approve this policy from Leon County, that we can propose it to FAC and say such.
Madam Chair, I second, and I thank Commissioner Minor for all his hard work on the committees at FAC, he's really an active member of FAC, has done a really good job. I don't know why he hadn't run for second vice yet, but he is, he is a stud, man. I appreciate everything you do for us and how, how you represent Leon County at FAC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And I'm just looking through this. Commissioner Minor?
Yes, ma'am.
To support the state of Florida becoming a member of the Southern Rail Commission and actively working to secure federal funding for the restoration of passenger rail throughout Florida. So this is the policy that you're asking the board to adopt?
Yes, ma'am. What will happen is that if, if the board decides to approve this unanimously tonight, I'll go to the FAC conference tomorrow, actually on Wednesday, we, we talk about the, the policy proposals. When I present this to the FAC committee, I'll be able to say that the Leon County Board of County Commissioners has also supported this. And just incidentally, the FAC staff has recommended this proposal, they've reviewed it, and they're recommending its adoption to the FAC committee this week.
Okay. Any, any other discussion, Mr. County Administrator? Did you make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
You did, was it second? I didn't, I didn't recognize.
Yes, Commissioner Maddox.
Commissioner O'Keefe, or Commissioner Maddox, second?
Second.
Okay, all right, good. All those in favor of adoption as proposed by Commissioner Minor, and we appreciate all your work, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. The next one I have is, I think, pretty quick. I think, I'd like to request a proclamation pronouncing a day for the illustrious Barbara Boone. If you've had the, the chance to be in an LT class, a Leadership Tallahassee class, you know that she is a community leader like no other. I think she has presided over every single Leadership Tallahassee class since Class Seventeen, and we're now at Class Forty-two. And I think, I think with this current class of Forty-two, she now has been shaping, guiding these young, these community leaders to about, I think, a thousand, a thousand different people.
Did you make, did you make the motion? Did you move?
My motion is to have a proclamation come back.
Okay, is there a second?
Recognizing Barbara Boone Day.
Okay. All the, thank you, Commissioner Minor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thanks, everybody, thank you very much. Madam Chair?
Okay, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This first one, I'm really excited about. We have received a request from the Florida Civil Rights Museum to rename Calhoun Street, which is owned and maintained by Leon County, in honor of the Reverend R. N. Gooden, as R. N. Gooden Boulevard. In addition to being a personal friend of Commissioner Proctor, Reverend Gooden came to Tallahassee in sixty-one to pastor St. Mary's Primitive Baptist Church. He was a state field director and local president of the NAACP, and he led the Southern Christian Leadership Conference for nearly thirty decades. I am going to, this is a quick summary of some of his achievements here in Tallahassee. He advocated and led to get low, low-income housing, equal ballot access, the appointment of the first black circuit court judges in the state, the first black principals at majority-white schools in Tallahassee, the promotion of act to the positions of assistant superintendent in Leon County school systems, and to ranks of sergeant lieutenants in TPD, and integration of TMH. That's just to name a few. That road is a county-maintained road, completely within the county, and for reference, for Calhoun Street, John Calhoun was a successionist and pro-slavery advocate, who advocated for slavery as a positive good on the floor of the U.S. Senate, and some other communities have considered. as a positive good on the floor of the U.S. Senate, and some other communities have considered removing his name from public memorials and street buildings. That's just background. This would also be the first street downtown named for a local Tallahassee African-American citizen. So I make a motion for an agenda item to come back to consider renaming North Calhoun Street to honor Reverend R. N. Gooden as R. N. Gooden Boulevard.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there a second? Well, I will second, I'll second the motion for an agenda item to come back for staff to do the analysis on renaming Calhoun to R. N. Gooden Boulevard, to R. E. Gooden Boulevard. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Keefe, I'm gonna support the motion for a agenda item. I'm very unlikely to support an item when it comes back for the same reason that I'm unlikely to support an item for Barack Obama and for the same reason I would be against an item for a lot of, basically, everybody. I think this is a very slippery slope. We've, I mean, it's, when it comes to streets, I mean, buildings and courtrooms is one thing, but streets, you're impacting mail routes, you're impacting addresses, it has fiscal impact, and I think it's, when does it end? I mean, when do we, at what point do we not just rename every street in downtown Tallahassee after somebody? And so I just want to get that on the record. But I think the sentiment is great, and I appreciate that. I just think we got to be careful about just renaming, that's a pretty good stretch of street, if I'm not mistaken, from Thomasville Road to Gaines Street, right?
It's Gaines Street. It's the shortest county-maintained street in the area, but yes.
I mean, it's from Thomasville Road to Gaines Street. That's a pretty good stretch. I mean, I'll see the analysis, but that's gonna impact a lot of houses, a lot of addresses, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing no other discussion, and this is for an agenda item to come back on the feasibility of it. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, with Commissioner Maddox out of chambers. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Do you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Maddox, aye as well. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, everyone. This is a request for, so I'm asking for, I'm moving and asking for a motion for the board to waive the office budget policy for me, to make one expenditure that's not directly for the county's benefit. I have a surplus in this year's office budget, and I would like to sponsor a hydration station with TMH Foundation at both Hartsfield and Appalachian Elementary Schools, both Title I schools in my district. This program educates elementary school students on the benefits of drinking water and staying hydrated. The cost out of my office budget would be, for two schools, filter filling stations and bottles for everybody, a total of $6,000. And I'm asking that you waive policy to allow me to spend that out of my budget for that.
Thank you. Is there a second? I would second it.
Second.
Discussion?
I think, I think if we start going down this road, it's gonna be a very slippery slope. And if we want to, I don't have a problem with it, but I think we just open this thing up to be able to give us the ability to use our budgets in different ways at the end of the fiscal year rather than just do one-offs. So if we're gonna go down this road, I would say that we bring back a policy that allows us to look at how we do. I mean, because if you got extra money at the end of the year, of course, there are things that I would like to be able to sponsor and give to and donate to. I guess I could do the same thing, but I just, I just think, again, I think it's a very slippery slope. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Welch, I'm sorry. Commissioner Caban, I didn't see you.
Thank you. Could you restate the motion, just to make sure I'm understanding?
Sure. It is to waive for, specific for a $6,000 contribution from my remaining office budget to the TMH Foundation to allow me to spend that outside of it having to be to county-direct operations to fund this happy hydration program at two elementary schools in my district.
Okay.
And what are the elementary schools?
It was Hartsfield and Appalachian.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm gonna support the motion on the table simply because of this. I think our current structure on office budgets does not treat us like commissioners, right? We are all elected because our constituents trust our judgment. If, it's between our office and our constituents who we answer to if they don't like how we spend our office budget, right? I don't like multiple things about the office budget structure. Actually, you know, the next budget cycle was gonna, plan to bring it up, restructure it. I think we should have, I think we should have more money, and I think we should have complete jurisdiction to how we spend that money. And if, if folks in our districts or our constituents don't like it, they're gonna let us know. So I'm gonna support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually not gonna support this for almost the exact reasons that Commissioner Maddox described. I think this is, I mean, we have now ramped up the budget from my, four years ago, from $12,000 to, what is it, 20,000? Is it 20? I think that, I mean, I return 17,000 of that or something crazy. I mean, I only go to the chamber conference. That's pretty much all I spend my office budget on. And I think that if we go down the road of where we can just, at the end of the fiscal year, go, I got $15,000, I can donate that to a charity of my choice or a good cause that I love. It's not our money. You're using taxpayer money to support something you like. I don't think that's right. If it were your own money, then that's totally cool. But it's like, you're gonna take taxpayer money and use it to fund something that you, that is special to you or, you know, whatever you wanna, you know, it could all be good. It's all, I mean, we're not gonna do anything crazy, right? But it's not our money to do that with. It's the public's money. You get the credit for it. Commissioner O'Keefe, this great benevolent guy who sponsored some water stations, but it ain't your money. So I think that right there, and I'm not, I'm just pointing out in that case, that bothers me. It would bother me as a taxpayer if, if I was doing that. I'm not comfortable doing that. So I will vote no on that. I think it is a slippery slope. It becomes a real horny, hairy, thorny.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Welch, thank you. Did you want to comment, Commissioner?
I want to say on point. So I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Welch. My point is, that's his decision out of his office budget that he has to answer to his constituents for. And that's, I think, all of us should have that mindset with our office budgets. That's just my, my opinion of how, it's not my job to tell another commissioner how they run their office, and that's my opinion of it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Caban. And I think, okay, Mr. County Administrator?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, it was literally just being brought to my attention. We've got policies guarding this, but we also have an ordinance, so that creates a little bit of a different wrinkle. So I think what we would advise the board, I don't think you can waive any ordinance. So I think what we would have to do is bring this back for the board's consideration, and obviously, we'd follow the board's direction on whatever changes you'd like to make. But I think we just gotta put it in the right posture to ensure that we were not tripping over any of our own ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator, for that clarification. So if it was a policy, perhaps we could waive it. Ordinance, we can't. Commissioner Caban, I mean, O'Keefe, do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yes, given that and the timing of the budget year, I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anything further?
Oh, yeah. Yep. I'll be, a couple proclamations and something else. So in July, our chair's Little League 10- to 12-year-old baseball team made it to the state championships. They were the first chair teams, team to do so. They went up against the team that ultimately won the World Series championship. And so I would like to ask for a proclamation honoring the chair's Little League 10- to 12-year-old team for their achievement in being the state runner-up in their 2024 championship game. And they're excited to come accept that in October if that passes.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor? He might be gone. Any opposition?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. So it's unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. I would also like to request a proclamation recognizing the staff and residents of the St. Augustine Plantation Senior Living. On the May 10 tornadoes, they had a significant tree come through, through their dementia building, and staff who weren't on shift drove in, climbed through tree-covered streets to make sure every resident was transported safely with not a Band-Aid of injury. And so I would like to request a proclamation honoring those staff at the St. Augustine Plantation Senior Living for caring so deeply for their clients.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor? Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
All right. The last thing, and I promise this is the last thing. This is about the Tallahassee-Leon County Animal Service Center, which, as we all know, is gonna be going through a renovation, which we also share funding for. So we're partners in caring for these animals. We all know there's an upcoming renovation to the dog kennels, and they need to build temporary kennels for that. Our current capacity is 50 dog kennels. Currently, the temporary kennels would only house 37. That's 75% of what we can house now. Those are not full. There are no vacant kennels. And that, unfortunately, despite incredible efforts of staff and volunteers, could lead to an increase in the doable dogs being put down. So I would like to make a motion to ask the county administrator to make a friendly offer to the city staff if they'd be, to find out if they'd be interested in some agreement to temporarily increase funding with us to accommodate a full 50 temporary kennels and bring an item back to tell us their interest and what a cost might be if they are interested in doing that.
And that's your motion. Is there a second? It asks for a second. Commissioner Proctor?
Second.
Okay. Mr. County Administrator, can you address that?
Just that, again, I mean, I think this is something that, if it passes, certainly we would do that. I think we need to be a little careful about this. This is an operational issue of the city of Tallahassee, and we have a funding agreement with them that clearly delineates what our funding responsibilities are there and what their decision-making is relative to operational issues. Certainly, the board could still do that. But again, I think we just need to be aware of that before doing that.
Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. And because of that, that's why I only ask for if our interest is to let them know we might be interested in temporary funding for them if they choose to do that as part of their operations, that we could be willing to assist. That's all.
So you're asking for an agenda item to come back from staff?
Yep. Just to let us know how it goes, and if there's an estimate if they want to.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second for an agenda item to come back in that regard. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Commissioner Proctor? Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you for hanging with me, everyone. I'm done.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, I'll try to run through this. First things first, I got a young man in Michigan. He gets very upset about CenturyLink's service, and he wants some answers. And I'm hoping we can, we can give him some comfort and some answers today. I know I've talked to Mr. Administrator about the increase in services, internet services that were happening in, I think it's Fort Branton, isn't it? Are you guys getting a boost?
Woodville, not Woodville.
Can we talk, can you give me some indication about what's gonna happen or when they're gonna get some relief in the Michigan area?
Yes, we'll follow up with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Heard the man say he gonna follow up with you. All right. Proclamation request. The 144th elected AME Bishop Julius McAllister was elected not too long ago, and I'd love to do a proclamation in his honor.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox.
And last but not least, and these will be three separate proclamations. We have, just five years ago, Pineview, Bond, and Nims Middle School were Ds and Fs. This year, they have the distinction of being Pineview in A, Bond a B, and Nims a B. And that does not happen without the leadership of principals like Carmen Connerdale, Shawna Jackson, and Dr. Benny Bolden. Those schools and those principals most definitely need to be recognized for what they've done in those schools and in that district. And along with that, the best school board member in the world could take just a little bit of that credit because he's been that, the school board member over in that area the whole time. Mr. Darryl Jones, don't let your hair get too big over there. But I would like to ask for a motion for a proclamation for those three schools and what they've been able to accomplish over these past five years. To go from a D and an F to a A and a B is unheard of. And it's not just that. If you go to those schools and you see those children and the pride they carry themselves with, and the way they act, and the walk that they have, those aren't Ds and Fs anymore. Those are kids that are some of the best students that we have in Leon County, and I'm so proud to say that those principals created that environment and their school board member Jones fostered the support to help those principals. So I'd like to ask for that proclamation, those proclamations.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Did you move? Did you make your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Last but not least, Madam Chair, you led a great meeting tonight. I think we've had some great discourse. I've missed you guys. This is our first meeting back since our break. Mr. Administrator, you held it down for us while we were gone. Great budget. We're looking forward to this upcoming year, and I'm happy and proud to be a Leon County Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you. I've got a couple of things. I'd like to request a proclamation for the 30th anniversary celebration of the Capital City Chamber of Commerce to be presented at our next meeting. I move. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Proctor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I can't make my own motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So it's been moved and properly second for the proclamation for Capital City Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor again?
Aye.
Madam Chair, real quick on point. Earlier, the chair made a motion for a, a, a point.
An appointment. I sure did.
Is, was that in order? If it's not, I will...
I think we switched it to Commissioner Caban.
Okay, okay.
At the moment.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry. I thought I didn't waive my right to make motions by being the chair, but I do. Thank you. I can pay, okay. Okay. As, thank you for that clarification. I'd like to have a motion requesting a proclamation that's recognizing October as National SIS Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor? Commissioner Proctor, you there? He might have gone.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. No opposition, so that passed unanimously as well. Commissioners, that is all. Oh, I'm sorry. I will. That is all that I have. Let me just look over it. Okay. Commissioner Proctor?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I have three proclamations for request. One, next month, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I desire to make a motion for the county to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month and a proclamation to give it to the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council.
Thank you. It's been moved in second for the proclamation. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you vote aye?
Madam Chair, next month?
I'm sure you vote aye as well. I'm sure you vote aye as well.
I did aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Capital Area Community Action is requesting a proclamation acknowledging their 60th anniversary, which will be on Saturday, October the 5th. And I move that we recognize the 60th anniversary of the Capital Area Community Action Agency. So move it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. You may proceed.
Okay. Commissioners, Mrs. Lynn Ann Griffin, proprietor of the Strong and Jones Funeral Home, has recently faced bouts of serious illness. She's rebounded. She's up and circulating. For the years and years of continuous service she's given philanthropy, she is raw. I seek a motion honoring Ms. Lynn Ann Griffin to be presented at our next meeting. So move it.
Is there a second? Commissioner O'Keefe, thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Anything further?
Madam Chair, I have noted here that the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet was held on August 15th. At the county, we had not met previous, prior to that, to support. But we've been asked our support even after the fact. And I seek to be advised in can we still honor our commitment for a table to that event. I attended that event that night, and I think I said it, I don't know what table I said it. I don't, I'm not, I can't remember. But we were not financially pure as of yet.
So are you, is that a motion you've made?
That's a motion to purchase that table.
Can you tell us what the table was, and then I'll have the county administrator to address it? Do you know?
I don't know. They are, we have with the table, I don't know if it was, I don't know what the table cost was. But I did go, and I was sitting at the county's table. We have always normatively supported the Freedom Fund Banquet. And I guess just out of the, they've not had it since prior to COVID. So this is the first time, and it's out of rehearsal. But at least we're regarded as a constituent that would support that, so they honored us as a supporter, even though we did not, prior to the event, vote for it. But we were honored with the table recognition and all of that.
Okay. So your motion?
So my motion is that we?
We follow up. The county follow up with sponsorship.
Yes.
Is there a second? Thank you. I will ask Mr. County Administrator to follow. It's been moved and seconded that we follow up. All those in favor for the county administrator to follow? Yes. Commissioner Welch?
What are we talking about? I literally don't know what we're talking about. Are we asking to follow up on purchasing a table? Or are we purchasing a table? And what are we purchasing a table for?
Madam Chair?
Please, Mr. County Administrator.
I think there's a $1,000 sponsorship for us to do to the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet.
Okay. And like, are we approving that? Or are we asking for an item to come back about?
Commissioner Proctor's asking for its approval.
Is this something we've done in the past? Okay. So it's like normal?
Yeah, we've always done.
We've always done it. We've always done it in the past. They didn't have it. And I guess some kind of way, they got lost in the shuffle this year. And so what he's asking is that we go ahead and do the sponsorship that we've always done.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. County Administrator? We've always sponsored it in the past.
Yes, we have sponsored it in the past.
And it stopped because of COVID. Yeah. A lot of things stopped because of COVID. But it picked back up this year and just sort of fell through the cracks. So it's not inconsistent with what we've done in the past. Okay? All right.